And when the boat sails down the canal, when the bridge opens someday. It's a whole nother discussion that we're having. Good evening and welcome to the March 16th meeting of the Fairport Central School District. This is our monthly business meeting. I would like to just inform everyone who is here in the room of the fire exits. We have two exits in front of us and two behind us. Should the alarm go off, we will need to evacuate the building. Use any of those exits, please. I would like to have a motion to approve tonight's agenda. If you could please verbalize that. Marty, first. Second. Erica. Any discussion? Okay, all in favor? Aye? Okay, that's seven zero. Thank you. That gets us down to communications with our school student advisory report, Jackson Dietz. You've been patient this evening. Welcome down to the podium. We need a microphone. Hold on for a second. Yep, yep, we'll use it. Thank you, Damon.
All right, okay. So hello all. It's great to be here tonight to see some community engagement at its finest. I'm happy that the board and central admin have given the community and students like myself an opportunity to share any thoughts about the proposed FCSD reopening plan. To that point, recently Superintendent Provenzano and two of our building leaders sat down with several FHS students, myself included, across both cohorts to gauge our thoughts on the ongoing process. So though we did not discuss the full reopening plan, given it was prior to the announcement going out, we did discuss the plan for in-person instruction on Wednesdays beginning tomorrow. Both the students and administrators present felt that it would be a good day for reinforcement of concepts, as well as another good day to connect with friends and staff. Students did share concerns over plans changing so much, but Mr. Provenzano pointed out the fact that failure rates were higher, kids are struggling socially and emotionally, and there have been too many technology-related issues not to make a positive change for our students. In addition to these changes, we have had several sports beginning this month, including volleyball, football, cheerleading, and several of our modified level sports as well. On top of all these great adjustments, we have Brotherhood/Sisterhood Week this week. This week-long annual event is a district-wide celebration that focuses on the values of civility, awareness of others, respect, and embracing differences. We use the acronym CARE in Fairport. This year's theme is Care Leaves a Legacy. Throughout this week, all FCSD students will model the CARE ideals by participating in activities such as our district-wide FIDM food drive, our virtual family talk, and our treasured family outreach day this Thursday and Friday this year. So coming up at Fairport High School, our students are going to celebrate 100 days until graduation on March 25th and 26th, as well as continuing to celebrate Brotherhood/Sisterhood Week with some additional events this week. So thank you, and I know we have a lot to discuss, so I would be happy to take any questions from board members or district administrators.
Anybody have any questions or comments they'd like to address to Jackson? Jackson, you work very hard. Thank you.
Of course.
Jackson, just real quick, I'm sure you saw.
Damon, is your microphone on?
Is my mic on? I'll just talk. Well, I'll give it back to you because I'm going to ask you a question. So my question is, I'm sure you've seen Mr. Clark's YouTube video where he talked about end-of-year events for seniors, and I just wanted to get your feedback on how you feel about that and overall.
Um, yes, sir. Sorry, sir. So honestly, I think there it is just, since some stuff has not been fully decided yet, I know we, as you know, students have seen that there are several plans outlined. I think students are honestly just hoping to see an actual definitive plan, and I know that's hard to do, given there's a lot of planning that you have to, you know, put in to make a decision like that. But I am, you know, hoping that there is a decision made about ball and graduation specifically within the next, you know, few weeks, because I think really, and I mentioned this at our listening session with Mr. P. and Mr. Clark, that it's better for students when we are in the loop, you know, just with those parent square alerts and everything. It's just, I think students do a good job of taking in information this year more than most years because, you know, it directly affects us. So, yeah, I think that would be what I would say about the graduation plans, yeah. Thank you.
Thank you, Jackson. We appreciate it. That comes down to my report. There really isn't much to discuss. I would like to thank again the community members who came out to speak to us tonight and share their concerns with us. Again, please know that we do listen to you and we have conversations and we do hope to plan accordingly. Because we do have an extensively long meeting tonight, I'm going to pass the baton over to Mr. Provenzano for a quick superintendent update.
I don't know about quick, Mr. Sliz, but I'll do my best. I feel compelled to share some thoughts, and I'll do my best to work through it, but thank you for giving me the opportunity to share some thoughts. We're now in the second half of our school year. It springs upon us, and there's a changing of seasons and a new energy. We're hopeful that we'll soon be seeing new beginnings, experiencing new beginnings for our students and school community as we approach the final quarter of the school year. Brotherhood/Sisterhood Week is in full swing. On Monday, yesterday, we heard from 2008 graduate Caitlin Kachalova and Apangue Achile, class of 2017. They shared a compelling message. Their message was simple: The CARE ideals matter now more than ever. They are timeless and fundamental to humanity and good for all. One does not have to be a hero, or even famous, or a social media star to leave a legacy. It all starts with individual and personal and micro relationships that we all have. After 25 years, yes, that's a quarter of a century, we are still passionate about talking or taking the experiences of our students beyond the academic realm so they can connect with others and contribute to an ever-changing and diverse society. During Brotherhood/Sisterhood Week, we pay homage to the enduring themes of CARE, which are at the core of who we are as a school community. That is, in this district, we strive to show civility toward each other, awareness to our surroundings, respect for everyone, and embrace the wonderful differences among us all. Together, we are stronger and better for each other. Our district's commitment to diversity, equity, inclusion, it's not new. I've been in the district for close to 15 years, and it's at the core of who we are. It's embedded deeply into our Board of Education core beliefs, our district vision, and mission statements. They've been there since I was newly elected superintendent for the past six years, and it only continues to grow more and more. But even before I was superintendent, we were deeply entrenched in this work, always trying to do better for humanity. On March 4th, we had the pleasure of welcoming Shane Wiegand and Gabriel Branigan. They came to Fairport and talked about racial policy and resistance in Rochester. Our community is rich, and it has a strong local history. But there is history to understand. Educating our students and staff on this history will help us all learn together and become better for each other and our greater community. Using literature to promote critical thinking and promote constructive dialogue is a function of public education, and is directly related to our New York State learning standards. We have an imperative to make the world a better place. Again, I'm finishing my 16th year in Fairport, my sixth year as superintendent. It does not take much to realize that we are living in bitter and highly polarizing times. One can take the social media or any other news outlet to confirm this, where we could see ourselves fighting amongst each other, at odds with their neighbors, and sometimes in bitterly fashion. The causes are real, and what at stake is crucial for our students. All these, in the end, are real-life and emotionally-charged issues that our students of today have to grapple with. Our responsibility is to give them the tools and skills and the wherewithal to do so in a constructive, thoughtful fashion. Schools are microcosms of our society, and we certainly are not impervious to societal issues. We are compelled, again, to ensure that our students are equipped to be critical thinkers and make informed decisions so they could affect and positively influence our world and humanity, and to leave a legacy of care. As I said, since last year, we are a year into the pandemic, and lives have changed. And there's been many different components of the pandemic. We've all struggled, learned, and we have grown together. As I tell the students, we don't need a T-shirt anymore. We are living examples of perseverance and resilience and determination. Our students are developing skills that will last a lifetime. This slide right here, I'm not going to go through it, but this is what we've been doing throughout the entire process. We're taking our lead from our experts. Not everybody agrees who those experts are, but they're the experts, and it's been a consistent theme throughout the course of the past year. We're seeking feedback, and we're communicating with staff. There's been thought exchanges, surveys, forums. We continue to do so happily to serve the public interest and to meet the needs of our students, always taking into account the social-emotional needs of our students and staff, because if we cannot get to their hearts, the learning will not come. And that is our number-one priority. The academic pieces will fall into place, but as we transition back, the social-emotional needs of our students and our staff are and will continue to remain the priority so we can get to those very important academic skills. There's lots of logistics and operational tasks at hand. We need to do this with high levels of consistency in this district, and we will always monitor and adjust. We are at a stage where we are excited, where we need to continue to work together and lean on each other so we can make it through this final leg. And we are hopeful and optimistic that April 19th comes and we are back in school with our students and our staff where everyone belongs, because this is when we are at our best. Again, there is an advisory committee. The district is making plans. This has been communicated multiple different times over the past several weeks. Five days a week, in-person instruction or in-person learning, we are hoping to realize this between April 19th and May 3rd. That's a window. Sooner is always our goal, but we always have a lot of different logistical pieces that we are managing and working through, which we'll talk about in a second. We see this in different grade bands, K-5, 6, 8, 9, 12. They all have different implications to consider, and there was talk about multiple different plans. Well, that's why there's multiple different committees to consider the needs at each area. There is conversation about shifting guidance from New York State to local authorities. We're looking forward to hearing with that. I think that could provide local control. We are always trying to do things in the safest way possible. There is a world pandemic. There's been over 500,000 deaths that have occurred, and, you know, that number is a number that I think it's important that we all recognize that we have a community obligation. And we also have an obligation to bring our students back in equitable fashion, in taking care of the social-emotional wellness of our students, and of course, the academic readiness will come. We have an advisory committee. Again, the advisory committee, again, I won't go through all of these different components, but they are up here on this screen. It's comprised of different stakeholders, from administrators to teacher reps to parental groups, support staff, and at the secondary level, we even have students, because their voice is strong. As you hear from Jackson, you know, we're really interested in hearing from our students. The community members, over 200 people volunteered their service and their level of expertise to be a part of this committee. It wasn't an easy task. There was a rubric that we used that parsed out who was committed to district mission, vision, and core beliefs. Were they an active member of our school community? Do they know the workings of our schools? Do they have related professional expertise? And do they have an open mindset, an expansive mindset? Because, again, it doesn't take a lot of research to find that this is a polarizing conversation. There are many different opinions, and we need to make sure that we're always using the best information at hand to do what's best for our students and staff. Our first committee meeting is this Thursday. We're going to be asking each group to process the same level of questions. This is all taken from the CDC toolkit. We'll be asking groups to talk about social distancing in the classroom, their thoughts on extracurricular activities, transportation, meaning the rival and dismissal in parental transportation, the social-emotional impact of the pacing of curriculum and assignments. Again, all groups will be talking about these topics. Social distancing in the cafeteria, common areas, unfinished learning gaps, what is the role of New York State assessments? What's the role of end-of-year local assessments? How do we make sure that we understand where our students are so when we start the school year in the fall, we're able to meet them where they are, manage our curriculum maps so we can resume in full, full effect? Again, we're trying to understand the scheduling implications, shifting gears in mid-year. We're analyzing survey data right now, talking about balancing class sizes, making sure that we're meeting the needs of all the unique special programs and classes that we have. And again, we'll be talking about wellness, making sure that we're doing all we can to support a transition back. And I'm excited about the prospects of transitioning back sooner, so we don't have to do it in the fall. This framework right here will be processed collectively with our groups. The survey data, 4,400 responses as of today at 11 o'clock. It looks like we have, as a whole, a little over 91% or 90%, over 90% of people choosing to come to school full-time. So we are planning for 90%. Each one of the buildings right now is disaggregating their data. And again, the implications of this transition, people that want to know why it can't happen on Monday or Tuesday, or even a week from now or two weeks from now, there's lots of logistics. There's site management pieces that we need to be accountable to, making sure that we're creating a healthy and safe environment. We need to make sure that we're supporting our at-home virtual learners. We need to make sure we're balancing class sizes so students can come back in the safest way possible. Right now, the principals are disaggregating the building data, and all that will be shared in our advisory committees. We will be recording these and sharing them, so community members and the Board of Education, of course, who is also involved in these advisory committees observing the process, making sure that we're being thorough and thoughtful in our approach about a return to school by April 19th. Again, the March 23rd session, we're going to review the takeaways. We're going to speak to what we've learned from the first session. We're going to talk about air exchange and ventilation, mitigation pieces that are critically important about a return to school, any implications to our master scheduling or classroom placements, how does this impact our grade levels in the buildings, a transportation assessment, and other pertinent topics. There was mention of community spread earlier. Just want to make note of that. We know more about COVID-19. There is a vaccination. People are still getting infected with COVID-19, but the good news is that people are vaccinated. Our hospitalization rate continues to remain accessible to a healthy and safe community. Our ICU rate, just the same. So I think 100% true. Infection rate, community spread is important, however, it seems like there is a understanding the shifts have changed because of the vaccination. We're seeing people recovering, people not getting sick or sent to the ICU. So those are all important factors that change, changes where we are, based upon the information that I've been accessible to. So I'm looking forward to continuing these conversations. I know that there's going to be a special board meeting on the 24th to talk about what we've learned to date, again, in a public session, processing the different components of the reopening plan. And then on the 25th, there'll be a YouTube Live community meeting as well, to continue to process it in public. I know that was more than five minutes, Mr. Sliz, and I apologize.
Thank you, Brett.
Thank you, Board of Education, for giving me the opportunity to serve this incredible community and the privilege of serving our students and families.
Thank you. That brings us to number three, our consent calendar, where we're going to be approving the minutes of the February 23rd board meeting, the special executive session board meeting on the 25th. We have the board workshop from March 1st. Those minutes?
Just skip the treasurer and investment.
Oh, I'm sorry. My mistake. Sorry, Matt.
No problem.
Take two. Matt, treasurer and investment update, please. Thank you.
Great. Good evening and thank you. Tonight, we have the treasurer and investment update for the month of January of 2021. We have a general fund beginning cash balance of 82.2 million, receipts during the month of 9 million, dispersments of 7.4 million for an ending cash balance of 83.8 million. Of the 83.8, approximately $70 million is invested in a mix of ICS, SEDARs, money market accounts, which is about 83% of the general fund cash. In terms of to-date compared to last year, and are trending for revenues and expenses, very similar and on track to prior year, about 45% of our expenses of budget to-date, or $59 million of the overall budget, and about $96.9 million of revenues have been received, and the bulk of that's related to property taxes and then the state aid payments that have come in to-date. It's about 75% of the revenue budget. That's all I have for the update. Thank you.
Tim?
If I might apologize a little, but I should have handled this at the approval of the agenda, because there's a couple of things in the consent calendar I'd like to ask questions about. One of them's the treasurer's report, not to give a heart attack. So I can ask it now and not have it removed from the consent calendar, or just make a motion to amend the agenda?
Why don't you ask any questions of the treasurer investment update, because that's where we are right now, unless there is, because I know it's part of the treasurer's report that you have questions on?
Right. And so that's why I'm asking, would you prefer I do a motion to amend the agenda, which I probably should have done at the beginning, but...
Well, you haven't gotten there yet.
I know. It's about to come up with the consent calendar, and we don't, for people who don't know, right? You don't ask questions at consent calendar. They just go through on approval, so...
But if you want to, if you don't want to approve the consent calendar as is, then we can go through and we can amend it, but then you'd have to ask your questions before we amend it, and then we'd have to amend the consent calendar.
So...
So we have to go through...
I'm not trying to give my vote away. I plan on approving everything. I'd just like to ask some questions about a couple D and E, the surplus recommendations and the other...
And I was going to have Matt explain the E with the surplus, right? Because there is a change there, and it was something that we approved at the last meeting, but it's been changed. So let me go through and let me go through and get a first and second on the consent calendar, and then if you have questions, then we can ask the questions, and then if we need to amend it, then we will go back and amend it.
If you'll allow the questions, I guess that's what I'm asking. Because typically, we don't allow questions for consent calendar, right? That's...
I have no problem with asking. I mean, you know, I want to have clarity before we approve the consent calendar.
Normally, you take the item he wants to talk about and remove it from the consent calendar, so it's...
See, and I would like to look at this whole consent calendar anyway, and in my opinion, it needs to be done differently.
It's just Robert's Rules of Order, so you don't ask questions.
So if you would like to, but we can't remove something from the consent calendar.
You can with the motion, too.
Okay, but, okay.
I don't want to complicate it. It's just, we're a small body. I just don't want to be inappropriate. If you're comfortable, you're the president, if everybody else is comfortable, then fine.
It's so hard to see down there.
All right, so why don't we do this? Let's go through, and you have questions on D and E of the consent calendar, Peter?
Yes.
So you would like to have those removed, and we will, we can approve the A, B, C, and we can approve A, B, C of the consent calendar as they are stated, and then we can go back, and we could, after we have discussion of D and E, we could then have an amended consent calendar.
Correct. And approve those independently.
So we are going to ask, I'm going to redo this and say, okay, we are going to approve for the consent calendar the minutes of the February 23rd board meeting, the minutes of the February 25th special executive committee meeting, and the minutes of the board workshop from March 1st. Items D and E are going to be left out of this motion. So do I have a motion for A, B, and C of the consent calendar? Damon? Second?
Second.
Erica? All in favor of approving A, B, and C of the consent calendar?
Aye.
Aye? Okay, that's seven zero. So now we're going to go through, and I'd like a motion to approve D and E, because we're going to do this, and then we're going to amend it. So D, the treasurer's report, and E, the surplus recommendations. Do I hear a motion for the consent? Peter? And do I hear a second?
Second.
Arlette? Thank you. Any discussion?
So I have questions. I know, surprise.
Thank you.
Right? No. And I assume this will be addressed to, Matt, you want me to address them to you, Brett, or whatever?
Mr. Stevens can...
Mr. Stevens, right. The other funds on the second page, second and third page, start off specifically the trust and agency fund, the final one, that looks like it's passed through for payroll, although the one above it's called payroll. The excess $700,000 that's always there, is that, is this payroll funds, or is this something else? Is this general fund dollars? What fund? I say general fund. I know it's trust and agency funds, but that's why I'd like to know what it's really related to.
Peter, can you be a little bit more specific as to where...
Sorry, so this final page of the treasurer's report?
Page four.
The second to last, there's the trust and agency fund that starts off with $708,000, passes through $3.5 million, in and out, and then ends with $708,000. And I think that's consistent, and I probably should have asked months ago, but what that excess is, I say excess, I want to be careful using that word.
Like, why is this, what does this flow-through account for?
Yep.
Yep, the excess, I can get the exact reason the excess, but the trust and agency account is a flow-through account, so if there's any scholarship monies that may be sitting in there, I can double-check exactly what it is for you.
Is this where the payroll flows through, though?
Payroll has to flow through here, so deductions, you know, any deductions that flow through as part of the payroll process, the trust and agency account is simply what that account is used for, for flow-through. And then payroll will have funds that flow from the general fund, or the special aid fund, or the school lunch fund, depending on the source of funds for paying individuals, and that will flow directly to the payroll account itself. So payroll is a whole separate account for tracking payments.
Right.
Trust and agency is the flow-through account that we have to use for any of those deductions and so forth.
So is the 708 what has built up over time into being in small increments? So we had something, I don't know if the word's budgeted, but it was moved into this TNA fund and then ultimately didn't end up being expended?
Yeah, typically, I mean, it typically builds up, and then, again, I could double-check the exactly what's sitting in there, so that you, you know, have the information, but essentially that money should flow through, should be spent, depending on the timing of what it's in there for.
Right. And for sake of discussion, this was more for because of what our unique year, the school lunch fund. I just wanted to point out, you have given explanations, others, I think this meeting's being watched more than others, but it's, our school lunch fund got devastated this year, right? Today, in terms of cash, it started off, well, end of the year, last year, fairly healthy, but much for, it had decreased quite a bit because of the last three or four months of the school year that were unique, and us trying to provide school lunches to those who needed it. And this year, with all the changes, even at the federal level, I mean, it's actually sitting much better than it was even a few weeks ago, right? It started the month, or January, at $17,000, ended at $325,000, but we used to have $750,000 in that fund, and it was self-sustaining. Now, potential that it might have to be supported by the general fund dollars.
Yes.
And I just want to point that out for those who pay attention, right? It's, we are using resources in ways that haven't been required of us necessarily in support of all the different things that are going on.
And that's because of the federal mandate that said all students get free lunch and breakfast.
Right.
Whether they can afford it or not for this entire school year. Along that line, Matt, the state aid of $299, $352, is that a one-shot, or are we getting that on a quarterly basis, or how is that state aid coming in for the lunch fund?
Oh, the state aid comes in for the lunch fund depending on the claims for the month. So it'd be, yeah, so here, when you see any state aid that came in for the month of January, that's actually quite a few months' worth, because they were backed up in terms of the reimbursements. So that's why, if we look back in December, we were down to $17,000.
Right.
Then we saw some October, November, some of those payments coming in. September, actually, I think September, October had come in, but we were still waiting on something from September, and then November as well.
Okay, so...
So that's not a monthly, that's not a monthly amount. That's a couple of months built in there.
So we might not see that amount maybe till the end of May?
Yeah, it depends on the timing of when they are processing the claims. Yeah, it depends on the timing of when they are processing the claims at the state and fed. Yep. So, you know, again, beginning of the year, it was held up a little bit in terms of the processing, so we hope to get it more on a monthly basis. We submit the claims, those are for reimbursable meals. We submit those to the state and the fed to get the reimbursement for being part of the National School Lunch and Breakfast Program, and then, so they're essentially at the end of the month, so we're always on a lag in terms of when we're getting those funds back.
Okay. And again, these numbers are for the month of January.
Right. Hypothetically, and this doesn't always work out, because I know at the federal level, they pass laws and they promise 15% funding and 50% funding, but when they actually pass the appropriations bill, it has 3% funding or whatever. Hypothetically, if we get all the reimbursements, will our lunch fund be back to where it was? Or do we think we'll get back there? Or is it, where do you think it's going to end up?
Yeah, I think this year, right now, projecting a loss and looking at anticipating April, May, but then that could change and depends now that we have students back in on Wednesdays coming up, you know, the more purchasing in the meals, we've seen growth of participation throughout the school year, started off slow in September. We're still paying the staff to produce the meals. It really is, depends on how much we're selling. I mean, it's essentially a business that's operating and not funded through taxpayer dollars, it's funded through the federal, state federal aid that comes through. What I mean, it's not funded through the general fund, it's funded on its own through à la carte sales, meal sales, reimbursement. So we're monitoring it and, you know, projecting to see where it could end up at year end, hopeful that we could, you know, at least not be in the negative at year end. It's something we're watching.
I guess that's the question, right? Where we, do we think we might have to transfer some general fund monies over to our school lunch fund?
Right. Again, projecting April, May, hoping we can make it through June.
And you have to remember too that that 750,000, every month, there was revenue from sale of lunches for those people who were not eligible for the free and reduced lunch, so that is not going to show up this entire year.
All right, it's gone.
It's just gone. And that's a significant amount of money. And letter E is the surplus recommendations, and we did approve this surplus back in the February meeting, but things have changed, so Matt, your information you attached to this, could you just explain that, please?
Yep. So when we went, after following the previous board meeting, when we went to place these out for auction and confirm the keyboards, we learned that after extensive review, before they went up for surplus, it was deemed that the keyboards were no longer needed. Due to some changes in the calendar instruction, when we looked at Wednesdays, there is a need and a desire to use some of the keyboards, so we're revising the number in terms of what we're surplusing.
What do we expect to get for these keyboards? You say we went out to auction?
We haven't gotten anything back yet on them because we pulled them from the auction.
So the reason for removing, my question is, is there a reason as a board, is there a way we can donate these? I don't know, the students, the kids, somebody in the community, rather than worry about getting, you know, 20 bucks or $30 per keyboard? I don't know.
I don't think we can donate to a specific person. We could donate to a nonprofit organization, but I don't think we can donate to a specific person by law.
So is that an option? Is there an organization out there that serves under needed kids in music areas that could use these?
No, per policy, we first have to go through the most.
Is that our policy? Dang it.
Yeah. There's a process that says we have to go through the, try to get the most money for the equipment, exhaust all options before they're donated, and then we can donate to nonprofits, other schools, BOCs, et cetera.
Just wondering on a policy level then, if there's a dollar threshold that says maybe it's worth finding a not-for-profit organization that benefits, right? Lower socioeconomic, need students, where these might be of benefit at a better level. But so far, we have a different policy in place at this point in time. Okay. Thank you.
So being no changes to D and E, I'm going to ask for a motion to accept those two items from the consent calendar as they are stated here?
Motion to approve.
Pete, second. Damon, any discussion further? Okay. And a vote, please? Aye? Thank you. That is done. So there, the donation now is the donation from, click here, from Amy Sessler, a drone, so I need a motion to accept the donation, please? Marty, second. Erica, thank you. Any discussion on this?
Just a big thank you.
Yeah. And this is, this drone is being given to the District Technology Department. Individual, Amy Sessler, thought it would be great for our technology and ISC to have this tool at our disposal should we need to use it.
You know, when I toured the high school last year, I went into, I think it was.
Damon, I don't think your microphone's working.
Let me try it again. When I went to the, sorry about that. I think it was middle school, actually. I went to the technology department, they were using drones, they were using, they were scripting, using Python scripting, and they were, they were writing scripts for the drones to go through obstacle courses in their rooms, and.
Oh, neat.
It really is fantastic education for the kids and modern technology using these drones, and it's awesome to see.
Great. Thank you. Any other comments?
Camera and everything. It just looks like an awesome drone.
I know. Maybe we should have a tour. Demonstration, then a tour. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, thank you, that donation. Thank you, Amy, for that donation of that drone. Much appreciated. Brings us down to number five, Personnel Actions, instructional.
So we have some.
I'm going to have a motion first.
There you go.
I'd like a motion to accept the instructional as it is stated here.
So moved.
Peter, and second, Marty. Discussion. Thank you.
Yeah, I was just saying, pretty basic, fundamental instructional personnel action items from substitute appointments to parenthood leaves, substitute teacher appointments, and just arranging or just organizing our sublists as well, so.
Great. Thank you. Any other discussion? All in favor? Aye, thank you. Brings us to letter five, B, Athletics. This is a list of the spring and fall two sports coaches. I'd like a motion to accept this, please? Marty, second? Erica? Any discussion with this? Many of these coaches are longtime coaches. They've been doing this for many years, and some are new, some changes and some newer names I see on there.
It's great to see the list there and that the student athletes will have an opportunity to participate.
And Dave Lanning is still on the list, and I think that's been there for 50 years. A longtime coach who is admired by all the students he touches. It's a great, great, great guy to have in our, in our wheelhouse. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, thank you. Non-instructional civil service? Need a motion, please? Marty, second? Arlette? Any discussion here? Brett, you need to say anything about these individuals?
We do have some retirements that are noteworthy. Michael Myers, cleaner at Fairport High School, and Karen Nitschke, who's a bus driver in Transportation Center.
So she's going to be with us through the end of the school year?
Correct.
So, oh, we're going to be down another bus driver? Okay. And we wish them well in their retirement. Retirement is supposed to be full of fun and exciting things, and some of us can't get away. Right, Marty? All in favor? Aye, thank you. Memorandum of Agreement. We have four memorandums of agreement, and each one of these deals with the extension of the time to submit for retirement. We have extended that out to, Brett, refresh my memory here, to the.
April 5th.
April 6th. April 6th at 4 o'clock. Normally, that date is the 1st of February. So these, we're going to go through each one individually. So I'd like a motion for the memorandum of agreement between the district and the support personnel dated from March 8th, 2021, is attached. Arlette? And second? Joyce, thank you. Any discussion? All in favor? Aye, thank you. Memorandum of Agreement, FAA Extension. This is the Board Approves the Memorandum of Agreement between the District and the Fairport Administrators Association dated from March 8th, 2021, is attached. Do I hear a motion, please? Marty, second? Erica, any discussion on this one? All in favor? Aye. That's seven zero, thank you. Memorandum of Agreement, the FTA. This is memorandum of agreement between the Board and the District, and Board, District and the Fairport Transportation Association dated March 8th, 2021, is attached. Motion? Peter, Marty, second? Any discussion? All in favor? Aye, thank you. And the last one is the Board Approves the Memorandum of Agreement between the District and the Fairport Educators Association dated from March 2nd, 2021, is attached. Do I hear a motion, please? Marty, second? Joyce, thank you. Any discussion? All in favor? Aye, thank you. That brings us down to Presentations. The 2021 and 2022 instructional budget and the total budget draft one, and emphasis on the word draft, this is still a work in progress. So Mr. Stevens and Mr. Provenzano, I believe the two of you are going to be doing this. I will move, so Matt can stay here if you wish, or are you going to go up to the podium?
I'm good here.
Okay. Matt, you can take over here.
We don't have the actual presentation, do we, Matt? Slide here. Thank you for giving the opportunity to present the instructional budget, the total budget, the first draft with the revenue components, which we'll be hearing multiple different times over the next several weeks as we are in full budget season. Once again, I'd like to express my appreciation to Mr. Stevens and his team, including the administrators and his staff in the business office, to put forth a budget that is aligned to our Board of Education's priorities and expectations. This is the fun part of the budget process because it really speaks to our story. There are direct lines that connect students to incredible programming, programming that people come to accustomed to, and it's part of our incredible school community. We're going to be reviewing the budget goals, talking about the instructional budget, reviewing the expenditure plan, which we have spoken about, and then Mr. Stevens is going to talk about the tax levy limit, revenue projections, and some long-range planning. If the Board has questions along the way or afterwards, we'll be looking forward to address those to the best of our abilities. But again, the budget season is an ongoing process. We make sure that we start the process as soon as it ends in May, and we begin it through the summer. The most challenging part of this year's budget was how do you build a budget in the middle of a pandemic? And I think that we've had clarity. There's been thoughtful planning and prioritizing by the Board of Education. You'll see in this budget opportunities to manage class sizes, have extensive summer programming, make sure that we have complimentary support in our buildings because we know when students come back, there's going to need, need extra support. Curriculum writing, again, to meet students where they are academically, so as they do come in, we hit the ground running and make sure that we're meeting them not only socially, emotionally, but academically. There's tech coaches that support our technology plan. There's instructional coaches that support curricular coherence and ways to continue to move our strategic planning forward. Of course, in this budget process, we analyze positions, reallocating positions to support the needs of our budget or needs of our students within our current budget. So we're really trying to be thoughtful about how we allocate our dollars and maximizing those dollars. But of course, using reserves strategically, and this is something that has been a part of the Board, and the Board's priorities over the past several years, and, you know, these are times when we will be using our reserves to make sure that we can continue to support our students and our staff, to make sure that they have the right resources at hand to provide the very best for them. Here are some enrollment projections. We're watching our enrollments very carefully. You know, right now, this number, you know, is 424. We anticipate that this is the number that we're going to end up based upon multiple different projections. Right now, the number is at 380 approximately, and we're going to be watching that as we continue to move through the budget process, and it's usually low at this point in time. And again, if you see the numbers throughout the course of each grade level, you could see where we have declining enrollment, right? You could see that we're, once we were six years ago graduating close to 500, these are our new numbers and our new number, normal, as far as our enrollment projections. And there's a bump, you know, there's a, you know, delta of 51 as we go into next year and project next year. And you'll see these occasional bumps, but again, these are the numbers that we're going to be planning for, and these enrollment projections help us with budget and budget planning as we move forward. But since 2018, we've lost approximately 190 students. Again, true to all of our projections, thanks to the planning of Mr. Stevens and Mr. Lough.
And Brett, that, that projection has been decreasing for the past 20, 30 years that I was teaching, it has just constantly been.
When I came here 16 years ago, that was the talk, and we're hitting the bubbles that we were projected.
Early 80s, we had high sevens.
But we do know that it's stabilizing. And, you know, as we know that enrollments, they do stabilize, they dip, but they also also bump up too. So we're watching it carefully as we move along. We know that class size will be very important as we return. Class size matters, especially when you're coming off a pandemic. We know that those very important relationships are relevant, and we need to make sure that we provide the right environments, and planning on the lower end of these class sizes is our goal. That's been a priority since we started our budget process, as we knew that we will be planning for our full school year. We also have a variety of different needs, students with IEPs, we have an English language learner population that we, they're a joy to have and as part of our school. There's 24 different countries and 21 different languages that we need to be poised and ready to support. Again, kids are coming off a pandemic, you know, reinforcing learning habits and learning skills will be a priority, making sure that our curriculum is aligned to their needs. You could see right here, again, through our analysis and process and projections, you'll see that where there are increases in staffing or sections at Dudley, Jefferson Avenue, and at Joanna Parent Middle School.
Brett, I assume that those increases in classes correspond with the population bump?
Yeah, again, you'll see pockets of increased enrollment, and you will see, in order to reach our goal of class sizes and staying within the frameworks that we themed as appropriate, that's why you'll see that those bumps are there, doing our best to protect the class sizes.
Yeah, I just, I've seen a lot of little kids appear on my street in the last couple of years, and they're, they're all going to be attending Dudley.
That's exciting. We look forward to welcoming them. And again, I really have to, first of all, express my appreciation to Doug Lough and Matt Stevens, and of course, the Board for giving us the opportunity to constantly look at our enrollment projections. You know, again, in six years, in this role, we're constantly looking at them, multiple different projections, because it's one of those things you probably have to measure three times, and it's very important. But these are the numbers that are holding true, even though there are little kiddos in the neighborhoods, which is great. These are part of, you know, our projections.
That's a pretty significant percentage increase at the K level.
There are pockets, right? But again, this number was, at one point, as Mr. Sliz was saying, what, 600?
Marty, when you were, you had sometimes 800 in that school, didn't you? Oh, Marty, when you were, you had sometimes 800 in that school, didn't you?
We did.
Yep.
And now we're down to 600?
Well, look at 424. That's, you know, a K.
I'm talking just about Brooksville.
Yes, yeah. So it's, declining enrollment is a real thing. You know, we've seen a steady decrease from, anywhere from 1% to 2% per year over the past several years. Seven through 12 secondary sections. We do know that there will be some anomalies when there's special classes for art and technology. You know, you need to be sensitive to class sizes to support high-quality instruction and experiences. We're holding true to those projections within those grade bands. So the summary of major staffing changes include, there'll be four additional K6 class as a result of class size, sizes, excuse me, a 4.0 increase, K6. There'll be a point, excuse me, 6.0 paraprofessional support, K through eight, to provide complimentary support in the building because we know students will be coming with a very variety of needs and will need many hands on deck to support the range of needs that we are anticipating. And we are also recommending, at this point, a district office administrator to support strategic planning, particularly as it relates to DEI, school improvement, and school culture and climate. This portion is the instructional portion. It's the focal point of this presentation. It's the single most, I, I think, the one that tells the most and, and, you know, gives the silhouette of who we are as an educational institution. It speaks to our robust programming, and the overall increase is 3.21%. Breaking that down further, you'll see the budget lines for the total instructional budget. The instructional administration is exactly that. It's everything relative to our administrators, instructional support, directors, again, principals, the classroom teachers, is the general instruction. Those are natural increases relative to our contracts, supply lines, equipment, and salaries. And again, that's supporting our educational programming. You'll see that there is a 54% increase in summer school. That's because we anticipate we are going to be servicing more students in summer school as a result of the pandemic and trying to meet students' needs. We also know that there is an 11% increase in the school library and AV and computer-assisted technology components. That's, you know, there's a, there's a shift in technology salaries. Last month, when I presented the non-instructional, we adjusted some salaries and put them in the right codes because the people that were working in the tech team were really doing work on the instructional side. So again, credit to Mr. Stevens to just clean up the books. Yes?
So just a observation, 2250 Special Education, that historically has been our largest, our fastest-growing percentage of the budget, I believe, is usually in Special Education. Now, that's relatively flat. So can you comment on, have we, have we changed staffing levels or, or policy in Special Education? Is there anything different about Special Ed that's kind of held that, held that cost?
So built within the Special Ed budget is going to be both our district program and our BOSI's programs. So as students are, are moving through BOSI's programs, depending on the cost, BOSI's also done some things to mitigate some of the related service costs in some of their staffing levels over there. And then, as we have staff within our own district that may retire in Special Ed, that helps kind of, you know, it's a 3.43% increase, and it kind of helps keep that, you know, that budget increase approximately in the, in the range of looking at increases, supporting equipment needs, and supporting the programs throughout the BOSI's programs that we're in as well. So and private placements as well, come out of here, so.
So that is a noteworthy line item, and we do have students with a wider range of needs, and we're honored to serve those needs. And like Mr. Stevens was saying, there's outside placements, there's BOSI's placements, and that's where that number comes from. And always trying to service students in, in our schools as well. And I think you'll see reduced costs throughout time.
Understood. I, I've just seen, in years past, I've seen the growth of Special Education be a lot higher than that from year to year.
Yeah, we have, we have experienced increases in private placements in the past, where we've seen spikes there that have amounted to a couple hundred thousand dollars, depending on the year. But we haven't, we're not seeing that growth at this point.
Inside the occupational/educational line item, you'll see our commitment, again, to BOSI's. We have many students attending EMCC programs, again, to get alternative experiences, certifications. We take advantage of BOSI's. Fairport is one of BOSI's bigger, bigger clients, and I think that's just a reflection of our commitment to make sure that we're meeting all of our students' needs. And we're proud to give that opportunity to those students. You'll see our Family Consumer Science, our tech classes, and our business offerings in that line item as well. You'll see in the school library and AV, computer assisted program, that's how we're purchasing our, our devices. And a few years back, the district made, or the Board made a commitment to decrease reliance on the tech reserve and start transferring those dollars into the general fund. Now, more than ever, those devices are, are seen and being turned over in our schools. And again, we're, we're happy to provide our students with an equitable allotment of technology devices. Here's the general support line items.
If I may, one item that, that I need to, to speak on, because out in the community, there is this misnomer that the Board of Education gets perks and money. The, the money you see there is for our Board Clerk and all of the necessary funding to fund our, our annual budget vote, and any placements of advertisements and newspapers, and anything that goes with the school board. There's not one person on this board who receives a penny from this district for the work that we're doing here on a volunteer basis, nor do we get any perks. And I just want to make sure that people in the community know that that is the case in all suburban school districts in New York State. I know some of the city school districts, those individuals are paid, but we are not, we're in a suburban school district. So what you see there is, is everything that is needed for the school board to do its job without getting paid or any perks. So I just need to make sure that that's out there and clear.
Thank you, Mr. Sliz. You'll also see in the line item that there is that decrease of point, excuse me, negative 2.78%. That was, again, what we talked about in the previous slide of adjusting budget codes, because we do have technical support professionals who are working in the instructional realm. So again, you just shifted the dollars over to that budget line over there. Over here, you'll see a 54% increase for our special items and BOSI administrations. That is so we can honor our commitment to BOSI's. BOSI's is engaged in a capital project. They're updating their facilities. We are paying $1.1 million as a portion of that. Again, that was something that we decided a couple of years back, and this is just us honoring that commitment. This does serve as a Board exclusion or a tax cap exclusion, as Mr. Stevens will be talking about in a little bit. But again, the total general support is 6.27%. Included here is our transportation commitments. You know, we have a whole fleet with many variables influencing the cost of doing business in the transportation center. It includes, again, staffing, summer school, special education responsibility, transporting students, shuttling students to, within the district, outside the district, private schools within a 15-mile radius, homeless transportation, all that costs, and, you know, that's reflected in this 1.1% increase. You'll also see that there are bus purchases, you know, buying 10 buses and trading in 10. Again, very thoughtfully planned and worked out so we can maximize trade-in value in our investments. We continue to need contact transportation as we continue to also try to make, you know, employment opportunities lucrative. And we hope that, you know, we can continue to recruit drivers, but until we are able to do that in a sustainable fashion, we do contract services to make sure that we can meet the needs of our students and community. Our transportation line item is 1.1% increase. Community pool or community service, that's the use of our pool, evening use. Again, that's just a carryover, 0% change. Again, the cost of doing business in our schools, these are ERS and TRS and our FICA meds are a percentage of our salaries. These are costs that are given to us by New York State. There's health insurance costs here at 3.04%. Mr. Stevens continues to watch those numbers carefully and to make adjustments as we move through the budget process. But overall, the employee, with employee benefits and our retirement system contributions is a 3.98% increase. Finally, our debt services and inter-fund transfers. You'll see a transfer to debt service fund, a decrease of 0.99%, and a decrease in our inter-fund transfer, 0.64%. That's pretty much happening because past projects are falling off. Mr. Stevens and the business team has refinanced to get better rates, and so we're seeing that realized on this end. And you'll see a capital outlay project to do flooring at Northside, much-needed flooring in the front foyer. So we'll be talking more about that as we move through the budget process. And this is our yearly capital project, which is state-aided and funded. Total expenditures are 3.43%. We're going to now transfer over to Mr. Stevens, and he's going to talk a little bit about our revenues and her next steps here.
Okay, thank you. So the next piece we'll talk about are our revenues. So here's a quick summary of the different pieces of the revenue budget. Our property tax, we'll talk about the tax levy limit, our state aid, sales tax, reimbursements we get from Monroe County, and other revenue like charges for services, use of money in property or interest earnings, miscellaneous emissions, and then use of our reserves and fund balance. Here's a quick summary of the history as it relates to the school budget, tax levy, and tax rate percent changes. So you can see five-year average for budget, about 2.5%. Same with the levy, and the tax rate of five-year average of 0.18%. You'll notice in 2018-19, a decrease in the tax rate. That's when there was an assessment within the town of Perrington. Overall, with the tax levy limit implemented back in 2012-13, each one of those years, as we go through the process of the tax cap calculation, are at the levy limit. So they were tax cap compliant as we went through, primarily related to any exclusions that would take place. Again, the rate, important just to show this, you see it's reflective and actually has come in underneath the levy increase as a whole. Here's just a line graph showing that. Again, you see the blue line as the rate changes throughout the years. It's going to have an inverse relationship in terms of the overall tax base as that increases within the town of Perrington, and we would see the rate itself decrease or be less of an increase as it relates to our tax levy. So again, we'll jump to the next slide, but overall, the tax levy limit enacted back in 2011, it's commonly referred to as 2%. We've heard that, that statement in piece in terms of the tax cap itself. However, with that, it really takes into, into place in consideration the rate of inflation, whichever is less. There's a formula on the next slide that we'll go over. Here's the calculation, how it works for Fairport. We have to look at the prior year tax levy. School districts have to. So prior year of 2020-21, 79.5 million. And then there's two multipliers within this formula. One's the tax-based growth factor. That's growth of the tax base within Perrington. That's set by the state. That's under 1% here, under half a percent. And then we have to factor in payments in lieu of taxes from prior year, and then they'll get subtracted out for the upcoming year, later on in the calculation. But the key numbers we look here, which is the lesser of 2% or CPI, is 1.0123. That's the multiplier. CP, growth in CPI from 20 to 20, from 2019 through 20 was 1.23%. So that's less than 2%. So in essence, the growth is actually under the 2% cap as a whole there with the multiplier. So again, it's the lesser of CPI or 2%. Then, when we add in our capital levy exclusions, as Mr. Provenzano talked earlier about the BOSI's capital project, the local share is excluded within the tax cap. So the BOSI's capital project payment, which was an increase from 2020-21 to 2022 of 1.1 million, our payment next year is 1.4 million. This year, it was 300,000. There's BOSI's aid that also is driven off of that capital payment. So the district received BOSI's aid on the payment, and then the balance is what is the local share that is allowed to be included as an exclusion within the tax cap. So it's, it would be our local share of buses here, as well as local share of the capital debt payments. Again, those are approved through separate propositions with the capital projects, so therefore have been viewed within the formula at the state level to be allowable exclusions and adjustments to the tax cap. Percentage change from year to year is 2.05%, and that would be the levy limit for Fairport at this point for 2021-22. Next piece is to talk a little bit about the state aid. We've talked about the proposal itself in past meetings, the executive proposal. Here is how it looks overall for Fairport for 2021-22 projections. No increase to foundation aid. That's the largest operating, that's the operating aid for school districts is foundation aid. And then we have our expense-based aids, transportation, BOSI's in building, 14.5 million there. Most of that increase of the $765,000 is related to the BOSI's capital project. Then we have our excess cost aids, which is aids on our students with special need placements, both in district, BOSI's placements, as well as private placements. And then we have our aidable materials, urban, suburban, and tuition aid, which is down about $14,000, primarily related enrollment-driven pieces related to textbook, hardware, software, and library material aid. The next two pieces are key as we look through this and just try to break them out for transparency pieces. There's a New York State local district funding adjustment to the state aid for 21-22. And essentially, that's a $5.4 million reduction in state aid that's being offset through the federal, federal stimulus aid, coronavirus response funds of 5.4 million. So overall, net zero between the two. However, two different funding sources, one being the state of dropping the funding source, being offset and supplement, supplanted by the federal funds of 5.4 million. Something to keep an eye on, long-term and key, just to keep in our minds, to be sure we, we are monitoring, you know, the federal funding, should that discontinue in the future, and the state funding too.
Yeah, Matt, I would expect that the federal funding would, would, would go away. That's not sustainable over time. What I worry about is the precedent set by New York State pulling back $5 million and setting that, setting the floor for next year based on that reduction. So that is kind of, feels quite a bit like the GEA we had years ago, but.
Yeah, very good point. Yes. Something to keep in mind is we're looking at future budgets, not just 21-22.
Yeah. Couple of comments. I haven't had time to look over what the one-house budgets that went out. Was there any indication in those about some of this?
So services aid was a piece that we had saw were rejected within the one-house budgets. So that was that piece of combining those 11 expense-based aid into one services aid.
So they both, both houses, when they put them out, rejected it?
Mm-hmm.
Okay, so when they come together, we'll hope they'll stand firm on that.
Yep.
Relative to the, the federal, they just passed the American Recovery, right? A lot of lobbying by all levels of government, by the way, got a statement in there for what they call maintenance of effort. So I think the preliminary numbers for us, there's 4 million addition at the 1.9, but in order to get it, the state must maintain this maintenance of effort, meaning they cannot decrease like they did this last time with the CRSA. That's still a bit unknown. The state could choose not to do that maintenance of effort, and we wouldn't get those funds, right? They wouldn't flow through to us. But there's some hope that perhaps there'll be a little bit of a boost to help for some of the additional expenses. We're purposefully looking at to try and, you know, make, I'm not sure I like the word "make up." I can't think of a better word for what's gone on over the last year. Our allocation was about 4 million, I think, spread out over two years. So Damon, to you, it is possible it could help a little bit should the state continue on that path, but we'll have to see. Because maintenance of effort is an average over the last the last three years, right? So the state has to show, and if this 5.3 million decreases, that would definitely have an impact on that average and may not qualify under the federal guidelines of maintenance of effort. So there's some unknowns out there still. I don't expect we'll know enough to have it impact this budget by the time we have to send it to voters. But it may be a positive later on, as I don't know what is surprise, but unanticipated, because we can't, we won't know enough to put it in the budget.
What I worry about a little bit is the normal cycle of the budget process in New York State, with the governor proposing his budget, and then we have this little dance going around and advocacy by us, and then we have the assembly in the senate negotiate something that usually ends up being better for schools than the original budget. But what I think is happening right now is that the governing in New York State is so impacted by the controversies that are happening right now, that I'm not sure what's going to happen through this process in terms of budget proposals and the negotiations, and ultimately the budget getting to us.
Yeah, by April 1st, right? A bit of a power vacuum. It's going to be potentially challenging for us to know for sure what the state will do on its state aid.
We will find out.
Or we won't.
Okay, moving forward, just a graph of our foundation aid. You see since 2016-17, you know, we did have a bump in 17-18, but since then, it's been a fairly, fairly slow increase of foundation aid, if at all. And 2021-22 is a flat proposed increase. 15-16 to 16-17, this will fall off in future years during the presentation part, but just important to note that that was the last year that the GEA money was no longer taken, always watch the words on how we say this, no longer taken away from us. That was the last piece that they finally brought us back to the $22.3 million range. That was about a $3.2 million restoration that year. So that's the reason for the bump in foundation aid from 16 to 17. So our total revenues here, it's our property tax, again, the tax levy at 1.6 million of an increase. Our pilot payments, we've seen an increase in some payments in lieu of taxes of about 67,000. State aid, about $600,000 increase. And our sales tax and other revenue recognizing a $90,000 increase. Here, within this, primarily is our sales tax. Sales tax figures have come in a little greater than anticipated current year, so recognizing a budgetary increase next year. However, interest earnings have been down due to low interest rates, so it's offset by a decrease in the interest budget as a whole there. So that's why it's only a net $90,000 increase.
And that we still need, we still have one more sales tax payment coming in?
Two more.
Two more. And I know, dealing with my village budget last night, sales tax is far greater than we even anticipated. I mean, we cut way down sales tax income, and it's not only come back to what it was, but also actually a little bit better than what it was, which we were a shock to see.
Yeah, it's been a pleasant surprise to see sales tax revenue where it is, because there was a big fear back in March when sales slowed down. We did see a decrease back in that quarter of the sales tax, but it has grown back faster than anticipated.
And two factors for sales tax are the fact that we now tax all online purchases in the state, and there was so much online shopping going on that that really helped. And also automobile sales have been skyrocketing through the roof. So that makes up a huge part of the county sales tax.
Yep. Thank you. So overall, the revenue increase is about $2.4 million before we get to talking about the fund balance reserve pieces within the budget. So next, we'll talk about fund balance reserves. These are pieces used to balance the budget on the revenue side. As you remember, on the revenue, we had about a $4.6 million increase, I'm sorry, in expenses, $4.6 million increase. Revenue's up 2.3 million. These pieces of the fund balance and reserves, these are funds we can utilize at year-end in a school year to assign as fund balance to be used in next year's budget to help the revenue side. We can allocate reserves that we have, long-range planning and the reserve funds that we build, these can help to pay for any of these operating-related costs in the general fund. So here you see currently looking at carrying the same amount of assigned fund balance of 4.2 million. Again, for 2020-21, it means revenues have to exceed expenses by at least $4.2 million to have those funds available. So it's a plan that we work through the budget development process to be sure that we can carry that forward each year. The transfer from debt service fund, this is money that we can utilize to pay a portion of the local share of debt. This does have an impact within the tax cap calculation, so any funds here get pulled out of that calculation as well. A tax surcharge reserve, an unemployment reserve, then a retirement contribution reserves. These three reserves can be used to pay for expenses related to any tax refunds that we have to issue out during the year, unemployment expenses, and then our payments to the retirement system for the employer retirement system, and then the teacher retirement system, if you remember. Teacher retirement system was recently established as a sub-fund and approved by the state to be an authorized reserve for school districts. So that has about two years of funding since that was able to be established, and the funding's been capped at a percent of salaries as a whole, so, but we have been able to fund the teacher retirement system reserve over the past two years. So overall, a $6.7 million of assigned fund balance reserves, and then the debt service fund transfer money. So in putting it together, this first draft of the budget, you can see the budget overall, draft one, is at 139.8 million. Our revenues, which that's the taxes, state aid, sales tax, other revenues, interest, earnings, et cetera, that's about 130.6 million. And then we have our fund balance and reserves, along with the transfer from debt service fund assigned, which bring the revenue and fund balance reserves to 137.3 million. When looking at the total budget of 139.8, and the fund balance reserves with revenues of 137.3, at this point in the budget development process, it leaves a gap of about 2.4 million dollars. As we, you know, learn more about the state budget, we monitor that, we monitor our health insurance bills as they continue to come in. The budget adoption is the board meeting in April, Thursday and April, which I believe is April 20th. So until the budget number has to finally be set, that number will continue to be looked at. Also something to look at as we look at our reserves is to analyze and decide, are the reserves within the balances we have to help as well try to start closing that gap? So there's different options and pieces that we can look at throughout the budget on both the expense side and reserve side.
Yeah, so a lot to happen between now and then, as you say, approval. Normally, Joyce, do you remember what day is it in March? We had Tin Cup Tuesday or something they called it, right? That's been canceled now the last couple of years, where we would go and we would be advocating ourselves, for part of the reason, to fill any gaps, but it was Tin Cup Tuesday, and there were a lot of people there doing the same thing, always demands at the state level. I mean, that's one of our options still, right, is advocating there, and the one-house budgets look better than the governor's, so they'll meet in the middle, that's likely to be part of this. I'm just reviewing out loud in our mind, you put 11 positions earlier in the presentation, right? Those could not happen, but I think we've had in earlier workshop discussions, and I'm still a fan of, we purposely build up our reserves, the non-capital reserves, right, for rainy day situations. And we've had a rainy day, storming, pouring situation for the last year, and this is our time to look at it. And so if that's where we end up, I don't think we'll end up that high, unlikely, but that's where we look. Now, that comes with the concern of what's sustainable, right? Using those reserves is not something we can keep on going for years and years, but I think, considering our situation and what needs to be done, you know, we have a couple years' worth of one-time expenditure-type things to fill our gaps and make extra expenses, just desks alone, right? We're 250,000, something we didn't plan on buying, but you can't social distance well with tables, so we need desks to... I just think that's probably, I'm advocating, where we consider looking, once we exhaust all other potential for, you know, lobbying our state representatives.
To the lobbying piece, I was just on calls today with Senator Brooke and Jen Lunsford, really strong advocates. The freshman representatives are really doing their part, advocating for their community and constituents. So yes, you're 100% right, but what's different this year is the level of advocacy and attention that these, you know, freshman representatives have given. So I know that we've talked about that at legislative committee.
Here's a breakdown, just in a pie graph, like to show it, the revenue shortage piece is about 1.8% of the total revenues. Again, you see the large portions, close to 90% being our state aid and property tax and pilots figures there. Next, we'll transition into talking about our reserve funds, looking at our balances from 2019-20. As mentioned by the comptroller, reserves are important to help with long-term planning. Planning ahead, as Mr. Forsgren mentioned, you know, in terms of looking, saving for future needs and looking at the potential rainy day and some of the pieces that we will run into as a district. So we'll run through the different types of reserve funds. First, start with the capital reserves. These are voter-approved reserves and funded typically through any excess funds at year end, help with long-term planning. Here you see a couple of different reserves, two building reserves, one established in 2018, has $10 million, $10.1 million in at the end of June of 2020, and a new reserve established in 2020, which has 2.3 million. Important to note of the 2018 capital reserve, $7 million of that reserve has been approved to be spent by voters on the 2019 capital project. So that was voted on in December of 19. That cash will actually come out of there and be down $7 million in that particular reserve. The capital technology reserve...
And man, if I could just interrupt there. And at our April board meeting, we're going to have an update on the capital project from our construction company.
Yes, correct. The capital technology reserve, those are helping meet some of the district technology replacement needs. So over the past several years, we have had a voter-approved proposition that has released some monies to be spent out of the capital technology reserve. Those funds are amended within the budget if approved, and then we actually maximize BOSI's aid by making those expenses through BOSI's that actually drives BOSI's aid. So the appropriation expended out of general fund, and will drive BOSI's aid in future years. The capital bus reserve, the district debt reserve is in place for any bus replacement needs. Again, we did transition away from having to utilize that reserve. Buses are entirely within the budget as a whole, and have the transportation aid that accompanies that. Other reserves, restricted reserves for specific purposes, our repair reserve, this can be used to pay for repairs or capital improvements to equipment that don't happen on an annual basis. Spending of reserves is subject to a public hearing, about 1.7 million in that reserve. Employee benefit accrued liability reserve, that's restricted to any separation payments when individuals retire, resign, if there are payout of any accrued sick days or vacation days, that's the only time that that reserve can be utilized for those expenses. Our tax surcharge liability and insurance reserves, these protect against losses, so the tax surcharge reserve, we have, we do budget, you know, a small portion to come out of that on an annual basis, about $20,000. Of that $20,000 that's budgeted, the district will only spend actually what, will only transfer, utilize that reserve for expenses that actually take place. So it could be greater or less than the $20,000. That's made by decision through a board resolution at year-end each school year. Liability reserve and insurance are against anything not covered by insurance, help pay for legal fees, et cetera. The next four reserves are board authorized reserves. These can be available to support some specific operating expenses. As mentioned, we have budgeted within the transfer from reserves, the retirement system, our employee retirement system, built over several years, is about $9.1 million. Our teacher retirement system reserve, built over two years, has about 1.7 million within that reserve. Those can be used to pay the bill that the district has to pay annually to the state for our participation in that program. Again, it's a percent of salaries, as Mr. Provenzano mentioned, within the expense side of the budget, that the district is required to pay. An unemployment insurance reserve can be utilized to support any unemployment expenses, you know, help prevent unemployment expenses through positions as well. And then a workers' comp reserve, recently established to support the expenses related to workers' comp. The district's in a consortium for workers' comp. Essentially, it's a self-funded plan as a whole. We do pay based on claims that the district has. So that was a summary of all of our reserves. Overall, total reserve balance is approximately 35 million. If we take a look at the capital reserve and some of the projected expenses, that will look to drop, primarily related to the capital reserve expense in 2020-21. Proposition, in addition, as I mentioned, the capital tech reserve, the proposition, proposal for vote included within the budget is to propose to use $185,000 of the capital tech reserve fund to purchase some technology, equipment, and supplies. Again, this is done through BOSI's to drive BOSI's aid. And at this time, this final proposal to use out of this capital tech reserve, this is the final within our easing off of the reserve. So it can be reevaluated if necessary, depending on technology needs, but this is the final year of easing off that reserve and trying to get funds within the general fund to pay for long-term expenses.
So after next year, that should leave our capital technology reserve at about 2.1 million?
You run back up to the balance.
Or does that still include what we planned for this year that needs to be moved?
Correct. So we still have the 400, we had up to, it was a little over 400,000 or 309,000 approved for this year. It'll be the 185, plus we approved up to $100,000 for COVID expenses related to this room here.
So about 1.6, then I think is where we're going to level off?
Yes.
And then we decide that's kind of where we want to leave it for any other emergency or massive technology upgrades that might have to be made?
Correct. Yep, that sounds right.
Good, no, I like where we are.
Thank you, Mr. Stevens. Really appreciate the thorough and thoughtful review. Future budget meetings, this is an ongoing process. On April 20th, there will be a presentation of the total budget and final draft at that point in time, as we were just speaking about. We will have the total and the final draft, and we'll be making a recommendation for the board to adopt a budget at the Board of Education meeting on April 20th. On May 4th, there'll be a public hearing on this budget. On May 18th, there'll be a budget vote and board elections. There'll be two board seats that are up for election on May 18th. Right now, it is at Johanna Perrin Middle School from 6:00 a.m. to 9:00 p.m. Again, we are awaiting further guidance on, you know, what the budget will look like. It will be a combination of mail-in absentee ballots and/or in-person voting. We'll be sharing more information as we get clarification in the near future. Thank you for giving us the opportunity to present the instructional budget and the revenue side of the budget.
Thank you very much. Next on the agenda is the district-wide safety plan, and that is in a draft form, and that is going to be our coordinator of safety and security, Mr. Monahan. He's going to give us a brief update where we are in it, and like I said, this is in draft form. Mr. Monahan is in this position, he's been in it for a little over three months. It's a new position that was created, and he is...
The safety plan is continually updated and reviewed by multiple different stakeholders. This process is no different. We're really fortunate that, you know, Mr. Monahan has been on the job, because he's been able to coordinate this and organize it in a way that is not done at the end of the year, but, you know, while we're in midstream here. After this presentation and after the board has an opportunity to ask questions if necessary, and after highlighted changes are shared, there'll be a 30-day comment period where we would then have an open comment session 30 days later, which would be our next meeting to, you know, people who want to make comments about the district-wide safety plan. But, Mr. Monahan, thank you.
Okay. As you know, I'm not going to spend a lot of time on this, because everybody has a copy of this, I believe, and we can ask questions later. But starting last year, we had a large number of changes to our safety plan, and Deb Miles and Becky Short went through and did a lot of updates for it. did a lot of updates for it. And this year, the same thing. With the pandemic, we've had a lot of changes and updates, and a lot of those are driven by the Department of Health and education laws, and they're mandated to us. So I'm just going to go through some of these pages and some of these updates and modifications that we've made. Again, Deb Miles, Becky Short, myself, Aaron Smith have gone through and modified this. So on page three, I'll start there, and then the changes are all in red. Page three, we've added our sample incident command structure under the communication procedures, also the natural and man-made disaster under the emergency procedures. And then we've reordered the appendices under the pandemic planning and the century roles and responsibilities. So that's just the beginning part. On page four and five, we've revised the district-wide security to include my position and the responsibilities of the centuries. And again, that's mandated that we put this in here. On page five, also, we've modified the student-staff multi-hazard training and drills, and that's a new New York State requirement that all employees have to be trained every year by September 15th. If sometime after that, an employee comes in, we have 30 days to give them that training. And we have that in a PowerPoint presentation we usually give on the superintendent's day, on the first day of school. On page seven, we have our suicide, added was our suicide prevention and the sources of strength, and that's where we have trained staff and students in sources of strength and have peer leaders within the schools. And we also added the communication between home and school. On page nine, we added wording under BIT that is just to simplify implied or a direct threat. That was just a wording change. Also referenced the district's code of conduct as it pertains to any situation. On page 20, we've added the emergency procedures for natural and man-made disasters, and that language was pulled from New York State. And on page 22, we referenced our partnership with the Fairport Police Department and the Sheriff's Office, specifically in regards to all the drills we do and debriefing afterwards to make sure we're all on the same page and all doing the same thing. That is the basic part of the document. The proprietary part or the sensitive information part, I will go over, we won't show on the screen, but that has to do with appendices that were added later, and that has to do with pandemic planning that was mandated by the state that we add, and that would be on page 46 to 48 of the document. And that identifies overcrowding, staff reporting to the buildings, social distancing, also PPE, where our items are ordered, where they're stored, online training for staff regarding proper use of PPE and the timeframes, protocols for exposure for a known case, and that is tracking, communication with HR, finance, cleaning of spaces along those lines. Also the protocols for documenting work hours and locations, building administration being aware in advance of those in the building and what the lockdown is going to look like, sign-in sheets, daily health screen provided, emergency housing is the basics for the pandemic planning. A lot of additions there. Also mandated by New York State, we also have century roles, responsibilities, hiring and training, annual safety schedules, which is New York State requirements now, and the addition of the emergency response team and putting myself in on that team. So as you see, we've had, this is just really quickly, we've had a lot of changes and updates to the mandates that New York State is asking us to see. And like Mr. Provenzano said, we're going to have, I think this will be either posted tonight or tomorrow, and we'll have a 30-day public review of it, and then any other discussions, changes that we might have going forward.
The one thing I want to just emphasize, this is not done in isolation. There was a complete audit two years ago, a safety audit done by Fairport Village Police, Sam Freina, Chief Freina, and our partners with the Monroe County Department Sheriff's Office as well, thoroughly reviewed with multiple different stakeholders in the building, district-wide committees. So, you know, this has been a well-vetted plan thanks to our networks and partners, and I appreciate you building upon it, and your eyes and expertise will only enhance it as we continue to evolve in this ever-changing landscape.
Exactly. I just want to, again, thank all of our partners. They have put a lot of work into this, including a lot of people within the district.
And as you said, Todd, this is ever-changing.
Ever-changing.
Once we get this document sealed, it's going to change. It's constantly fluid.
That is definitely-
We have to have a document to start with, knowing that we're going to be constantly updating, changing as life goes on.
Absolutely. I would imagine we will have changes.
I mean, there was a presentation today with Sheriff, County Executive, and Sam Freina, our police chief, about using the crisis intervention team now when mental health calls are put out, and how we have a whole new crew of people who are going to be working with us, who are mental health professionals, who are going to be working side by side with our police officers.
And I imagine somewhere down the line, this will be implemented in our plans also.
Into the schools, right.
As, you know, an enhancement on top of what we do already with our TIG training, you know, our ERT teams, our BIT training-
Your BIT training, right.
Things like that.
Yeah, we know that when it comes to preventative measures and safe environments and creating a culture that is healthy and safe, it starts with that level of intervention, our training and creating the right environments, you know, continually communicating about how we could best support our students and families. These are best practices, and it's definitely intertwined in these plans and complemented by our incredible partners, as you mentioned.
And this all starts at the building level-
Yep.
-to be involved and hear the communication and, like we were talking about, the sources of strength and having those peer leaders and feeling comfortable to approach people to, you know, move it forward and get people help if we need to.
Hey, Todd?
Yes.
So when you talk about certain provisions in the plan being mandated by New York State, which agency in New York State is actually sending that guidance to us?
There's a number of them. There's a number of them, but the biggest one is probably education. State education mandates the majority of these. We have other bits and pieces that are mandated by other agencies, Health Department, things like that, but education is the big piece that mandates certain things be added in.
When you say mandates, you're not saying suggested?
No, they're not suggested.
You're saying mandate?
We have mandated, we have, the wording is mandated in there, we have to add it in there. And a lot of times, pieces of this is not only mandate, we have the language, but also the training to go along with it.
And do we submit this plan back to the state?
Yes.
That's what this process is. It's actually, again, thoroughly reviewing it with multiple different stakeholders, making the adjustments, aligning to the changes, you know, having the public have an opportunity to comment on it, and then submitting it for review by the state and approval by the state. This happens yearly.
Will this be live on our website so that the community can have a look at it?
They'll be able to see the district-wide quick reference safety plan. We do not put our full plan up there for-
For safety reasons.
So just another clarification. So provisions that adhere, associate with the pandemic, such as adhering to New York State Department of Health guidelines, those are not suggestions, those are mandates?
Yes, yes. All the, the whole section on pandemic planning and talking about PPE and talking about notifications and how we process things are all mandated now.
And I assume that they're not referencing in our plan the specific metrics of the DOH mandates, but the, because as they change their mandates, we're not going to go back and change our plan every time. It just says we adhere to their guidelines, right?
We adhere to their guidelines. Depending on what it is, we might have to revise it. And that could happen, I mean, once it's accepted, it's accepted, but if they mandate that we revise it, then we'll have to do that. They may or may not do that. That's-
All right.
Right, okay, thanks.
Anybody's.
Any other board comments, questions? Thank you, Todd. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Brings us down to seven board discussion action items, which is the policy first read. Do I hear a motion to accept the policies, the first reads? Damon, second. Erica, any discussion about the first reads? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, thank you. Seven B, policy second read. You have those policies and you've had them. We've been working on these in our policy committee. I need a motion, please, to accept the second reads. Marty, thank you, second. Erica, thank you. Any discussion on the second reads? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, thank you. Brings us to letter C, nomination of candidate to BOSI's. This is our representative from the Fairport community who represents us on the BOSI's Board of Education. And let me read it here. It says, "Be it resolved that Maureen Nupp residing in the Fairport Central School District is hereby nominated as a candidate for membership on the Monroe Number One BOSI's Board for a term of office to begin on July 1st, 2021, and end on June 30th, 2024." Do I have a motion to accept this nomination? Peter, second. Joyce, any discussion?
Yeah, who's this Maureen?
Yeah, who's this Maureen Nupp? Maureen, for those of you who don't know, is a 21-year member of our board and has since moved on to the BOSI's Board of Education. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Great, thank you. Brings us down to budget transfers. Motion to approve the following budgetary transfer to reclassify expenditures to and from budget codes as attached. And I need a motion to accept this transfer, please. Peter, second. Joyce, any discussion?
Really, this is for this year what Matt already did for next year, right, in the budget. So essentially, just-
Right.
Putting it back, putting it where it belongs.
Cleaning it and putting it into the right, to the right account code.
Yep.
Right. Any other discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, thank you. Brings us down to seven E, resolution. A motion to approve the form of the notice of annual meeting, budget vote, and election in substantially the form attached hereto and authorizes the district clerk to publish and post such notice in the manner provided by law. This is basically saying how the annual, the district vote is and where it will be and the dates and everything about the district vote. I need a motion to accept this. Marty, second.
Second.
Arlette, thank you. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
That's unanimous. Seven F, a resolution, be it resolved that the following proposition be submitted to voters of the district at a meeting to be held on May 18th, 2021, as attached. And this is to, for the board to authorize a purchase of information technology equipment. And then we will have another vote right after this to take that money from the reserve. No, this is to take it from the reserve, correct, Matt? This is to take it from the reserve, the $185,000 that Mr. Stevens alluded or mentioned in his budget presentation. So we have to by a vote of the board, make sure that we have this moved. Do I have a motion, please? Damon, second. Marty, any discussion? And again, the board has to authorize movement of money from a reserve account. This is authorizing the proposition, correct, so that we can put it out on the budget vote. Right, so the community, the community votes on it, but we have to approve the authorization to put it out to a vote. Any other discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, thank you. Letter G, a motion to adopt the resolution for a proposed capital outlay project at Northside Elementary School pursuant to the New York State Environmental Quality Review Act, otherwise known as SEAKER, as attached. And this is to get the environmental packet that goes through with the replacing of the flooring and some of the hallways at Northside. So we have to authorize the SEAKER to do this. Motion? Marty, second. Arlette, thank you. Any discussion?
Who's actually doing the SEAKER?
Would we be lead agent on that?
Yeah, so the declaration recommendations, we work with our architects. The architects will provide a project description to council. Council will help draft the SEAKER process itself. This here is, because of the work taking place with the flooring, simply being replacement of flooring, is declaring it as a type-two SEAKER resolution, so there wouldn't be a lead agency review. It's not a type-one-
So it's a type-two-
Process, type-two.
Okay.
Which is a negative declaration.
Negative, okay, thank you. Any other comments, questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you. And that brings us down to seven H, the school calendar for the school year 2021-2022. You have that. And I know there was a comment brought up earlier that we will discuss regarding one of the dates, the Columbus Day on October 11th, so we can always amend this should we need to. So do I have a motion to accept it as it is, knowing that we can amend if necessary in the future?
Well, we'll talk about it.
Right, we have, right, but right now, we're just going to approve as it is written, knowing that in future discussion, we could, we could make that change. A motion?
So move.
Peter, second.
Second.
Thank you, Marty. Any discussion?
Yes.
Yes.
So we've discussed this, I think, in the summertime, and I would like to see it amended to add Indigenous Peoples' Day on the date currently listed as celebrating Columbus Day. We talked about keeping both of them on the calendar the last time we talked about it, but at the very least, I would want to see Indigenous Peoples' Day added to that line.
And I agree completely.
Any other comments? So I, three other board members say that they would like that change as well?
So do we need to make a motion to change it?
We would have to amend the motion. We'd have to change, we'd have to change the calendar.
I'll make a motion to change, to alter the calendar, to add Indigenous Day to October 11th.
Second.
Second. So Joyce made the motion, second, to add, it would be Columbus slash Indigenous Peoples' Day?
Or the opposite.
Or the opposite, either one, either one.
I would make the motion, well, I would amend the motion to be the opposite.
Okay, so Indigenous Peoples' slash Columbus Day? So I've got a first and a second on that. Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? All set, thank you. That takes us down to comments from board members. Anybody feel compelled to speak?
A little.
A little?
So, go ahead, Marty, sorry.
I was just going to note that Arlette and I attended information exchange. It was a great presentation on code of conduct in the virtual age and, you know, amendments to code of conduct related to that. That's all recorded. So when we get to work on code of conduct again, it's a great resource done by Dr. Colt at BOSI's.
Great. Damon, anything? Arlette? Joyce? Erica? Peter? Yes.
Sorry, guys.
No.
Just quickly, during the public comment, I at one point had a small, I'm not sure it was an Alpers, but I chuckled at one of the comments and wanted to address it personally because there were accusations laid of secret meetings and transparency, which we heard quite a bit. In my nine years on the board, I've always found that interesting, right? That 60% of property tax is roughly, that's my percentage on my household, comes to the school board, right? And the other 40% towns, fire districts, library, well, libraries include with us, and then the county. And, you know, we have talked ad nauseam, how do we try and communicate best in this day of communication, right? And, and I don't know that we've gotten it perfect, but we have tried many different things. And no offense to those who spoke, but I have found there doesn't be a lot of people who care, right? We don't have to keep, do any secret meetings because nobody shows up at the workshop. We can talk about whatever you want, and it's a secret because you didn't pay attention. And so perhaps I'm a little sloppy on that, but that's my take, is we always are publicizing. We just passed a resolution to communicate, right? Elections and meetings and calendars are passed, and they're all out there available. Sooner or later, somebody has to make an effort to know- effort to know about when those things are happening. This board has tried many different ways to make sure it's out there and people know about it. If you don't know about it, it's because you don't want to. That's my take on it. The opportunities are there to participate. 60% of your property taxes in over my nine years, you show up for capital meetings, which I love. I love when people show up. That's great. But, you know, it's just, you know, we have a big thing going on. I understand it's been a big year, and there's a lot of interest. Glad to hear from it. But secret meetings, no transparency? Sorry. That is not the case.
It's been interesting, too, because on some of our meetings are YouTube, we have a couple hundred people watching. And that's, that's not including the people who might view it later, because all of our meetings are broadcast, we are recorded, and they are archived. So anyone can always check our meetings. Certain meetings, such as an executive session, we cannot open to the public by state law. That's how executive session works, and those are, we're very careful about what is discussed in those executive sessions. Next Wednesday, we actually have another meeting open to the public to view. All of our meetings here in this room, you can attend here. We moved this evening's public comment to the auditorium, knowing that more people would want to attend, so that we made accommodations for that. And we are, our next Wednesday, we are going to be discussing amongst the board, because these are board meetings that are held in the public. They're not public meetings. They're board meetings of the board, meeting of the board in the public so the public can observe them. And that's what a public meeting per se is, whether it's in the county, whether it's in the state, whether it's in the village or the town, or a school district, any public entity, our meetings are always open for the public to come and observe. This past year, as you alluded to, Peter, we've had some nuances with, in the beginning, our meetings were all done via Zoom or YouTube Live, where we were at our homes and not meeting in person, as we are doing now, socially distanced with our masks on. And we found that that was very useful for us. It was also useful for the community because people could watch us and they could listen to what we're discussing. Just like the fact, like I mentioned, that, you know, we get paid for this position, which is falsehood. So thank you for bringing that up.
You know, as long as we're just talking, inventing, if I can just jump back to me for a second. So thank you for saying that, Peter. And, you know, the public comments is, I always appreciate hearing from everybody. I mean, we are the public, right? So I appreciate hearing from our neighbors about what's concerning. But it's been weighing heavy on my mind, right? And it's exhausting, quite honestly. And I know that some of us get phone calls during the day, and I'm probably more active on social media than I should be. But there is so much misinformation about what we can do and what we should do and what our intentions are and motivations and compensation and power and politics. It's just, it's boggling to me. And your point is good, that our meetings are open, right? And we are, I've had coffee with so many people in the last eight years just to talk about different issues. We're open and available to talk about things. If you really want to know, just let me know. Let any of us know when we're willing to talk about it, right? But all the people, except one, thank you for being here, that spoke in our public comments, they're not here. They're not here in our meeting. They didn't come down the hall to watch the mundane business of the board, which is what we spend our time on, and is important, right? Jackson's here. Thank you, Jackson. But if it's important, if you really want to know the conspiracy of our secret meetings, show up, right? And listen and watch and watch the replay and look at the minutes. It's all there in public, right? So I don't want to come across as self-indignatious. I hope that's the right use of that term, this English teacher over there. So-
And right next to you. And right next to you, there too.
But I'm just saying, this is not, there's no agenda. There's no secret. We're not doing anything, this is public education. We're doing the best we can, right? So it's great to make loud proclamations in public and try to get clicks and audiences for your radio show or whatever. But this is serious business, right? It's not a game. So if you really want to know, just show up. That's all I have to say. Thank you.
Thank you. All set? Okay. I need a motion to enter executive session, and the executive session is for matters related to the salaries of non-particular bargaining unit. Do I hear a motion, please?
Be non-collective. It shouldn't be-
Non-collective, yes.
Excuse me, I didn't mean to interrupt you.
No, no, no. Thank you for doing that. I was like, yeah. Non-collective bargaining unit. Thank you.
I saw those.
I was saying, nonparticular. I'm like, wait a minute, what is that? So let me re-read, let me reread that. A motion to enter an executive session for matters related to the salaries of non-collective bargaining unit.
I saw those.
Thank you, Arlette. Second. Marty, any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Thank you. For the people who are viewing, when we exit executive session, we will not conduct any business. We will simply adjourn this meeting. So at this time, the recording will stop. We thank you for attending. We thank you for watching. We thank you for your interest. Good night.